The June 30th planning board meeting will come to order at 7:02. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
You beat me, Wally. Second.
Wally.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Town Planner with an update with the remote meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This open meeting of the Global Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current emergency and the Commonwealth's COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend the Governor's order suspending the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, residents of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Global Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All supporting materials are available on the town's website.
What's the first up?
Sorry, I had a phone call, so. The continuing of 106 King Street Mental Drive Development care of Kenneth Cover. Advocate is requesting approval for a preliminary subdivision plan. Resident lots. Do I have a motion to open and continue the hearing?
No motion.
Second. My second.
Yep, alright, so. Wally, yeah, Brad, Jim.
Yes.
Okay. So. I don't know who, what's. Kevin?
The peer review engineer did receive the plans on June 16th, TEC, and did provide a review just this afternoon of those plans. So I don't know if the board would like to hear from the project manager for the developer or would like to hear from TEC, but both are on the call this evening.
Right.
Can I just ask that we just give a brief summary of last meeting so we can pick up where we left off?
Certainly, last meeting, we presented a plan that showed a different plan than what is currently before you this evening. It went from 10 lots to, let me just pull up the plan for you all. So originally, the board was shown a preliminary plan that showed 10 lots. Today, before you, the lot had been adjusted and now they show six lots.
Nine.
Excuse me.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the engineer.
My name is Bill Holt, representing the applicants. And we have made, we've made several changes to the plan. Most notably is went from 10 lots to nine lots. We have shortened up the road 905 feet to 925 feet. And we eliminated the little spur road that was going off towards the Fiori property, which was parcel 13, I believe, in the back. I mean, parcel 12, I believe, in the back. Which is, I can't, so I can't show you. But we revised the plans accordingly based on the comments from TEC and also from the, from the Conservation Commission's review of the plans and review of the wetland protect, and wetland line that was delineated by Damon Burke, who's the consultants, I'm the consultant for the developer. So the wetland line has been set. There were very few changes to the wetland line. And there was an off-site wetland that was identified, which is to the north, northeast on the property of, I think it's Bonnie Robin Wright, which is, as you're driving into proposed railways on the left-hand side. It's off-site and we located it originally approximately because we didn't have the lines on any of the property. But during the review, the consultant for the, the peer review for the Conservation Commission and Damon Burke both viewed that location and hung about six flags, seven flags over there, which we located. And it does show that the buffer zone, which we had anticipated was onto the property in the backside of lots two and three. We also, we configured the lots based on, on the fact that we had spur road is gone now and we brought the road back. We got nine newly configured lots. There'll be basically four on the left-hand side and five on the left-hand side and four on the right-hand side. And there's an ANR lot in the front, which was already approved and has septic approval and I think has a building permit now as well. So the changes we made were basically based on the TEC review. We moved some driveways to avoid catch basins. We added the CBA areas to all the lots and identified the CBA areas in all lots. And this, and this plan that Rebecca has up right now, the CBA is actually the crosshatched area with the exception of lots two and three. There was a little error on the hatching and apparently we hatched the area that was not in the CBA on lots two and three. But you can tell that lot two and three, they're fairly good size and there's only a small portion of the lot that's actually in the crosshatched areas is actually the area that's not CBA. But the CBA is, I think it's well over 30,000 for each or very close to 30,000 for each of those. And every other lot has, I think it's over 20,000 square feet of CBA. I think the, one of the other streets goes to circles, 120-foot circles are showing on all the lots. Grade-wise, we're coming in off the roadway for about 75 feet. I think it's set 23% and then we go to 6% down all the way to the back to the cul-de-sac. So the roadway is, is a.
I think I froze.
Being a 2% slope. Goes down.
Yeah.
Down 6% all the way. Prose, show some prose grading, have septic system designs for all, all lots, such as some perk tests for all lots, I'm sorry. We do have to do a couple more because when we push the lots around, we have to move some septic around a little bit. So we'll be doing some more testing in the interim between now and the definitive phase. We're doing, we showed some grading on all the lots that will accommodate the roadway rating. We're showing an island in the roadway and proper, proper diameter of the cul-de-sac is 55-foot radius outside diameter. Outside radius, sorry. The island in the middle, we're going to use as, as a cement forbay for the drainage. And it'll go into another detention area in the back, right-hand side of the property, where the drainage has been down the left, right-hand side to let the water flow out to the wetlands. We also throwing a tension pond about halfway, right in the middle of the roadway on the right-hand side. There's a low spot right there where we're going to construct a tension basin and treat the water. We also have catch basins and a proprietary treatment system. It's going to be also be used to treat the runoff before it goes into the basins. We have a sidewalk on one side up to, I think it's lot four, the driveway to lot four, or is it actually lot five, I'm sorry. And we're going to cross over and put a sidewalk on the right-hand side to serve lots eight and seven and six. So it's on one side for most of the roads, on both sides for a short distance, right around between lots four and eight. We got parcel 13G, which is the remaining area, it is 18.3 acres total area. And we're using about 8.3 acres of the property for the development, for the nine lots in the roadway. And there's about 10 acres left over, it's not called parcel 13G. Right now, it's, it's a, it's part of the subdivision, but it's non-budible lot at this point. Not proposing to build anything on it. It's just the remaining lot, it does have frontage on King Street and Center Street. It also has a large amount of wetlands. There is some upwind, but it's not really conducive to construction at this point. So we're not proposing, it's a sheet, yeah. There's an overview sheet, Rebecca, I think it would be best, maybe down further. Keep going down, I think it's an overview sheet of the whole subdivision, whole property, which we added those two sheets to get the whole view of the property. Somewhere. Further down. That's, that's the all real existing conditions, as you can see the whole property there. As the existing conditions, no proposed development, and this is the proposed development. Over you, she, we can see that the 8.3 acres is that consisted of nine lots. And then the remaining area is parcel G, if Rebecca zooms in, on the lower half, you can see parcel G is, is 10 acres and it has quite a bit of wetlands, there is some upwind, but not enough upwind to put septic on. So it's essentially a non-budible parcel at this point, unless the rules change. When we did the conservation, they reviewed the line up to, I believe, about 200 feet into that parcel 13G, it didn't go any further than that because we're not proposing any development down there. And they did review the streams, the intermittent streams that are on site. And they agreed that it was intermittent streams, not perennial streams, so there's no 200-foot, 100-foot riverfront area. Again, the rip, the buffer zone and the 75-foot no-build zone are shown on the plans. Buffer zone is highlighted in yellow and the 75-foot zone is a magenta color, the purple color on the plans. We are proposing now to extend the water from Center Street, the intersection of Centering King, and extend it up to the intersection of the new proposed roadway. We're going to replace it with a 12-inch line, there's currently a 6-inch line, I believe, in, in King Street right now. So big improvement in the water volume and pressure to the area. The applicant has been in discussions with the water department and has proposed to do this work. I don't know if it's been finalized yet, I think that will be finalized during the definitive stage. But there is a great, pretty significant improvement in, in pressure and volume with the installation of the new 12-inch line from Center Street up to the development. It's about 1,500 feet of, of a new 12-inch line they'll be installing and an 8-inch line in the, in the subdivision itself. We are showing wells right now as an alternative. It's only an alternative if the water line is not able to be, to be installed. And if, if in fact it isn't installed, then we can go back to wells. We're showing wells located in all the properties as alternatives. And they are set back 100 feet from the septic. So I know one of the comments is discussed with Board of Health and clearly we will have to file with, each individual lot will have to file a septic plan with the, with the Board of Health. And obviously the spacing for wells to septic would have to be maintained. We have planned it out that way, so it's just in case as an alternative. I think that's basically the major changes that we've made to the plans. If you have any questions or if you'd like to have, I'll hand it back over to Becker.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Pete, our peer review. I know you just got him, Pete, did you take a look at it at all?
Yeah, no, I got, I got these plans two weeks ago, so I was able to look at them. Just got the letter out today to Rebecca. I think one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was the length of the road. And the board was kind of looking for more of an explanation for why they should grant the waiver to extend it over 750 feet. So this plan does represent an improvement. It's been, it's been shortened to 825, but Bill, can you, can you provide an explanation? Or what, what is the reasoning or the thinking behind having the road longer than what's allowed in the regulations?
Well, I think I'll let Kevin, who's the applicant, I'll let him discuss, you know, the, his thoughts on why he feels it's appropriate to, to grant a waiver. If that's, if he's available, I think he's here somewhere. Is he not? Is Mike, Mike or Kevin?
Mike, I don't need it.
I don't see it going on. It should be on.
I can, I can, I can, I can, I know what he was going to say, pretty much, I can tell you what.
How about Mike, how about Mike, I don't see Kevin.
Yep. One of the reasons was just to offset some of the costs that were going to incur from running that new water main, the improvements coming up the roadway. Yep. That would be, that would be one of the biggest ones. And we were also talking about possibly putting some trails in the land that we're not going to use. That, that, that's some of the reason. And Kevin can probably elaborate on it a little bit more, but that's it.
Okay, Kevin's, Kevin's on now, so Kevin, you want to speak to it? Go ahead. You gotta de-mute yourself, buddy.
You gotta, you gotta unmute yourself.
Okay. Sorry about that. I tried to unmute myself and I guess I hung up, but. Anyways, this, we've talked about possibly donating some of the land and putting some trails in there for the benefit of the town as well as the fact that we're going to want to replace that 1,500 feet of water line. So that's why we're asking for, for the waivers on the length, so we can do some betterments for the town.
Okay. Just going to keep, I'm going to go back to my letter here. I think many of the comments that I have going forward are just looking for more details as we go to the definitive stage, which.
Question for you.
You have a question? Go ahead.
No, no, I'm okay, good.
I, I have a question though.
Alright.
On a point of border question. The 750-foot road length, and I was part of that and rode it when it went in. And what it was for was so that, and my, my own subdivision is an example of that. So the roads don't continue to go on and on and on without an exit, exit way out. It, it is not a good argument for the developer or applicant to say, I want to go and add 200 feet beyond the regulation so I can pay for a water line that I got to put in anyway or improvements to the town. You got to stick to the regulation and, and see what else is out there. But extending it so you can put in more houses to max density of person over the regulation, it is not going to fly. And I understand cost improvements, but you got to start with the regulation of 750 road, not say, well, I want to max it out and then I have to increase the water line, which is all good. But that's at your expense, not for the board to waive 250 feet. And the reason why the 750, the 750 road was put in there because of access. There was no way out. And unless you have a secondary access.
75 feet.
Yeah, we're talking 75 feet, not 250.
Yeah, they, they shrunk the roadway.
They shrunk it, isn't it 950?
No.
It's, that plan that we showed, isn't 950? No.
825 to the center.
825.
What's, what's the total length of the road?
Wally, it's, it's 825 to the center of the cul-de-sac.
Right, so what's it to the other side? Total rate of payment is seven, should be 750.
65 feet, I would say, 65, another 65.
So we're looking at nine, nine something?
No, it's eight, 880, because 825 plus 55, so it's 800.
So, so you're 100 feet beyond. What does the plan look like if you pull it back to the reg?
Looks shorter.
Well, shorter in what, what comes out?
Well, I think we probably lose at least one lot, yeah?
Yeah.
I haven't calculated how many we'd lose.
Okay, so 750, I would like to see at least the sketches, so what that looks like be presented to the board. And then we go from there. Okay, water improvements, that's great, I'm happy about that. I was going to ask you about the water, the wells I get, the septic I get, because I don't think we have two up there anyway. So that all makes sense, the trails, now that's something, that's something that might be worth a waiver, you know, because if it benefits the town, and that's the standard, just so everybody knows. You, you don't get asked for a waiver because you don't want to put it in or save some money. It's the waiver request if it benefits the town and if the board sees a benefit to the town and the future residents in there. I do like the sidewalks on both sides, Bill, thanks for doing that. I understand the drainage in the area too. The wetland with the rights, that was an interesting pick. And is the roadway there too, Bill?
Is that, was that?
The roadway that swings by those two lots on the rights with the, with the wetland? You, you know, is that access road down to the farm there?
The access road down to the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
You have a wetland area. That's a, that's a private paved driveway to the farm, Wally.
It's not a private paved driveway, it's actually a right to pass and repass.
No, it says right on the plan.
The plan's, the plan's not accurate, that's a right to pass and repass. That is not, it's not a private road.
I agree with this.
No, it's, it's in, it came before the court in a case law and the owners of the farm won that. That is a, you have to go back on the, on the decision of the board back in the 70s and 80s as to where that is. And they won that in land court, that's a right to pass and repass, it's not a private road.
Are you talking about? I could probably address that since I was involved in that, that court proceeding.
Yeah.
You're right, it is, it is a right-of-way that the land court reinforced in their holding in that case. So it is, it is a right-of-way or if you have it, for access to Fiori's land in the back for the operation of Hunter's Haven.
Right, and the board supported that in the court and, and I still stand behind that.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So that's my question.
Right, it is, it is in fact a right-of-way.
Yeah, so, so that's the only question is, is how's, so that's on the rights property and the road must, must hug that, correct? The delineation line?
The, the proposed driveway that's above on, on Robin Wright's property that goes out to the farm? Yeah, it's, it's shown right there on the, on the plans, at the top, you can see it says paved drive.
Right.
That's, that's on, not on the property though, that's, that's off the property.
Right. So the runoff, so the runoff goes from the right-of-way access and then her property is down beyond that?
No, no, her property is uphill.
Yeah. All the property is on King Street.
The, the wall, it's the property line along the property between Mrs. Wright and the applicant is actually a ridge. Essentially, it separates the water flow from one watershed to the other. And the water from the rights property, there's not, not much of the water from the rights property comes onto the property, onto the applicant's property and not much of runoff goes onto her property. It's pretty much a dividing line. In fact, I took shots along her driveway in that area and it is actually sloping towards her wetland, that D-series wetland, it's offsite. That driveway flows towards her property, not towards the applicant's property.
And our property. And the physical, and the physical driveway, driveway itself is parallels down, all the way down to the end of the farm that goes up. And so this runoff or this delineation line that you have in the red is actually on the right side of that right to pass and repass.
That's, that's the buffer zone to the wetlands.
Right, and that's on the right side of the roadway?
Yep, yep.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we get that squared away. So that's on this, and thanks for clarifying the road length, that it is beyond the 750, but I would like to see what it would look like with the regulation. And since that is the regulation, why, why design something that's outside the reg? And not design something that's, that's to the reg?
Because if they're going to better, it sounds like they're going to benefit for the town with trails and it also sounds like they're going to bring in water line and improve the flow up on King Street.
I think the trails is a, is something nice, but I don't think that was the intent. If you remember last time, it was something different. The water line is definitely an improvement, but I think it was probably dictated by the water sewer board. And if that doesn't fly, then what?
Then it's back to wells.
Well, okay, but then, but then that, you see what I mean? Somebody's got the horse on the wrong side of the cart.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I agree with the analogy. We could always go back to wells and not do the improvement, but you know, I think.
That's right, you can do that.
It's a very distinct improvement, it benefits all the abutters, certainly. And it, it just seems, I mean, that's why we're here in a preliminary plan, not to show you exactly how it conforms, but to show you what we're requesting here in terms of waivers based on other improvements and benefits to the town.
Alright, I'll stand to listen, so, so let me back out of that conversation. I've stated a few things, a few points, and let me have Pete get back in and finish his letter.
Okay.
To greet the rest of the board.
Fair enough, yep.
Okay, so, so going forward, you know, we're going to be looking for some kind of traffic report or, or review of the site distance at the new driveway location? I mean, at the new roadway intersection location?
Yes.
I think a lot of these are just going to be standard items that we would look for going, going to a definitive plan, so a little bit more detailed. They're looking to use HDPE drainage pipe instead of reinforced concrete. I don't know what the highway department requires, so that's something that they should weigh in on. Looking to use 3-inch diameter iron pipes filled with concrete rather than the stone bounds at each property corner. We'll, we'll want a stamped stormwater report stamped by a PE. There's a comment here about coordinating with the Board of Health with the, for the location of the wells, which we've talked about already. The fire department should review the location of the fire hydrants that are proposed. The applicant should coordinate with the water department to determine that adequate pressure exists. Sounds like they've already done that, if they've talked about adding a 12-inch pipe on King Street. The project is within the Aquifer Protection District, so it will require a special permit for the development. And we would be looking at the export of material from the site, so we would want to be, we want to see some kind of cut fill analysis by the engineer to make sure that any, any soil from the site's being reused. Bill, I, I got your contiguous buildable area plan, I saw, I heard you say there was an error in a couple lots, so maybe that's why I was confused.
Yeah.
If we can just clean that up going forward. The roadway, is the roadway meant to be public, taken over by the town at the end of the day?
I think that's the applicant's, we wish, yeah, is to have the road accepted as a public way.
Okay, that's what I figured, since it was pretty much meeting most of the requirements in the regs. So I saw in the regs that all curbing shall be vertical or slope granite, but then in the typical section, there was HMA burn proposed on one side?
Yeah, it's, it's a typical, typical section detail, which I will correct for the definitive. We are proposing slope granite entirely except for on the lower radius curves at the, at the entrances and on the cul-de-sac, where it'll be vertical. It's labeled on the plan as vertical granite and slope granite. Unfortunately, the detail did show both, on, on one side it showed the slope and one side showed the, the asphalt curve. But yeah, yes, we're not going to be using the asphalt curve, so we'll take that off in the definitive stage.
So I guess, could, could you guys provide a little bit further explanation of where you are with the discussions on the water main? Is the, have you met with the water department at, at this point?
No, like Kevin and Mike, because they, they actually did the, had the conversations with the water department, so. Oh, like Kevin and Mike, because they they actually did the, um, had the conversations with the water department, so.
Mike, I I can answer that. Yes, we have met with the water department and we've met with Ryan, their design engineer. And he's, he likes everything. An eight-inch pipe would suffice, but we, uh, in the in the best of the town for their whole. Uh, design, they have that designed for twelve inch. So we're gonna go with them and and, you know, bring up the twelve inch coming from Center Street. And where, uh, they're putting together a meeting right now, and we're gonna finalize all our details on that. So we're just waiting to him to schedule a meeting. I spoke with the superintendent the other day. And he said, would I be willing to come to another meeting when they put one together? And I said, yes. That's what our plan is.
Any clues on hydrants? How many?
Excuse me, could I, I gotta just ask one question. Um. Is Kevin, uh, not Kevin Coniff, but the Kevin, the attorney, could I get you, could you please state your last name and your company?
I'm sorry, yes, uh, it's Kevin Lawless, L A W, L E S S, Six Harris Street, Newburyport, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Wally.
Yeah, um, the amount of hydrants that you guys proposed in a, um, Pete just asked about that on the plan, but did the water department? Or the fire department give a minimum?
We're waiting, we've given, we've given the, uh, fire department a set of drawings, and we were waiting for any feedback they had from the proposed.
And that was how many hydrants roughly?
I believe it's two. Um, this one required every five hundred feet. I think we have one about halfway and one at the end.
And there's also one at the entrance. There's an existing hydrant at the entrance to the property right on King Street.
Okay, so so a total of three you guys would be putting in?
Uh, no, I think just two. There's one existing at the end.
There's already existing.
But if you bump in the main up to twelve inch, doesn't that have to get redone?
It's on the other side of where we're doing the improvements.
They'll tie it into the new main, but they don't have to replace it.
Yeah, okay, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be tied, it'll be tied in.
I think all the, any hydrant along the way has to be tied into the new new water line. I think some down on on King Street down by Center Street also that need to be tied in.
And that's part of what we have to work out coming up the road. The new additional hydrants coming up the roadway.
Yeah, I think so. All all hydrants and services to to other houses have to be connected to the new main, so.
Now, what's the, I I know there's water that that Bussing took up there years ago, a little bit.
Um, he's never touched any water on that street.
Yeah, Bussing never took, I don't know where you're getting Bussing. You brought that up again, uh, last time, Wally. Bussing never has touched anything up on King Street up there.
He did extend it down to Pheasant Lane. Yes, they did.
When we tied in Pheasant Lane.
That's Pheasant Lane, that's down below you.
That's across Center Street.
Right, I brought, I I brought the water from, I brought the water from Center Street down to my common drive. Right across from Jawelski's property. And then they took it from there.
Right, so. That was my question. So so, um, so Bussing brought it up Pheasant Lane twenty years ago and and put it out a little bit. Bill did the plan for that, I think. Okay, and then somehow it crossed up to the Center Street area where you guys are going up to the farm. And so is the water department gonna bring it down the hill towards Main Street at any point, or did they talk about, not you guys, but did they talk about it?
There's a bottom, there's a master plan. They have a master plan in place.
Yeah.
They're working on now, but I know they're trying to do a lot of things, to develop new wells and everything else. So I don't know what order of what's important, you know, what their importance is and what their budget is.
Yeah, alright, it would just be interesting to, that's not your bag, but it's interesting to know from our perspective on the planning. Just to see, because there there was once upon a time. A piece in the reg that you would extend the main from whatever the subdivision was down, and that's how Bussing did it a little bit beyond his subdivision. And end it with a hydrant and a blowout. And I was just wondering if, um. If the water department was gonna pick up where you guys leave it and run it down the hill bit. Uh, at some point.
We're tying into an existing main right on Center Street.
Right, but but going down the other end of King Street towards Main Street is the next leap. And I was wondering if that's what they were gonna do, and that's why they requested a twelve inch.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty sure in in going the other direction towards Pheasant Lane, if if, uh, Kendall put that in, I do, I know he put it in.
Yeah.
Most likely at least an eight-inch line. Um, and it's not a six-inch line. This happens to be a six-inch line in King Street right now, which is fairly inadequate.
Okay.
I had to put an eight-inch line from Center Street down to. My common drive.
Okay, yeah, alright, so that's, that's. Thank you.
Alright, I'll get back to my letter. So, uh, parcel thirteen, we, uh, Bill touched touched on that. It's. It's considered a separate parcel. Is that where you guys would be planning to put the trails in?
Yeah, I think, uh, from the from the, uh, subdivision roadway, probably down the drain easements to the that parcel. Uh, and then onto that parcel. It's actually, it's a that parcel is actually part of the property, you know, it's not being developed as part of the development.
I see.
It's it's part of the eighteen point three acres. It's actually about ten acres up to.
Would that be a conservation restriction, or would there be any restriction on that parcel, or would that just remain a separate parcel under ownership by the applicant and or a homeowner's association?
Well, I I will tell you that if if there is well, if we use wells, um, we have to put a nitrogen sensitive nitrogen loading restriction on the portion of that parcel, if not all of it. Um, in order so we can use four bedrooms on on a thirty thousand foot lot. Um, that's a DEP requirement. If you want, you have to have one, you have to have ten thousand square feet per bedroom. On your lot, so any lot that has less than forty thousand square feet would have to have that. Uh, nitrogen loading restriction on a separate parcel that would be limited. They wouldn't be able to put septic on that on that property. If there's, if we do get the water, and that's what we're hoping, then there'll be no wells, and that that restriction will not be needed. Uh, there's no restriction on how many bedrooms you can have, um, if you have town water versus wells. And as far as the disposition of the of the property, I'll let Kevin and Mike speak on that. I I don't know what their ultimate goal is. I I believe he mentioned it would be offered, but. Um, that's something that Kevin can speak on.
Maybe I could, uh, just chime in here for a minute. We haven't, we haven't really finalized any of this, but, uh. It, uh, it could certainly be, um. Have, as Rebecca, you had asked about whether or not it would have some restrictions or covenants, uh. With the lot, there's also the possibility we can convey it to the, uh, town conservation commission. Uh, so we'll we'll look at it in a number of different ways, but we are committed to having a public benefit with some trails. And and some provisions that would ensure the continuation of that.
That sounds good. Just when you say trails, it then, you know, leads to maintenance, and so trails are only good as they're maintained. So who's gonna maintain them? Who's gonna spend money on them? Is that gonna be found? Is it gonna be incorporated in an open space plan? I mean, trails are great with benefits, but only if they're being maintained and or acknowledged by the town as being something accessible to the town.
No, I.
Clarify, but I'm looking forward to hearing more about that when you get into the definitive.
No, I I totally agree. I totally agree in terms of the maintenance issues, whether or not it's natureway or we figure something else out, but I'm I'm happy to talk to you more about that.
Is, um, is it, are these part of the trails that used to be used and currently are being used? By by both horse farms that abut that, since this parcel was a horse farm once upon a time?
Mike, maybe you could correct me, but I don't believe there's any current.
There are no, there are no trails out there at all. That was, that was just one option that we were looking at. There there's nothing that's being used. It's nothing that's ever been used.
So the, so the trails of yesteryear, did they grow over? Because there there were horse trails through there that the original.
No, there wasn't, Wally. I I I played out there when I was a kid. There was no trails out through there.
Antipolis had horses back there on those trails, and they and they were being used. I don't know what decade that was, but I do know that's when they were. So so that was my only question.
They were just using it as an open field, and then horses just roam through the woods. That's all.
Right, right, and they event, and there's a trail that that goes back. I've been back there. There's a trail that goes back there. But anyway, that's. Conservation and open space. Wrote a very good boilerplate that you should look at for trails and restrictions. And, um, and it was done originally for the old Wood Street property that had a big bunch of land up there. I think it was twenty-five acres or similar. Uh, that they were gonna use, and you, you know, no motorized vehicles, but it could be used for horses and nature trails and all of that. And I think it's, it's a standard boilerplate with a few tweaks. That they use on their parcels.
Great.
Yeah.
Take a look at that, yeah.
Yeah, they spent some time doing it, and especially if you're gonna, uh, and that's what I would consider a good, you know, donation piece, embedment to the town. Um, on that, because it does benefit the town and the residents up in that area and keeps it from, you know, somebody dropping a Wizard of Oz house in there in the backyard, so. Um, so that that's something to look into, but they they put some really good thought into that with, um, with open space years ago.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Alright, the, uh, the last comment I have in my letter is, uh. Related to one oh four King Street, the Fiori property there. So from the last plan, we pulled, um, mostly all the the work off that property, but we ended up with a drain easement. So I didn't know. What what's what's the legality of that? Is is that something that they can grant to you?
I may let Kevin Lawless speak on that. Um, we may not even need the easement. I put it on there right now. It looks like potentially would, but I might be able to redesign this so that we don't need an easement on that on that property. That would be the goal, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going with that.
Get back to you on on, uh. Legality, it's, uh, let me get back to you on that. We'll we'll figure out and I'll work with Bill to see if we actually need the drain easement.
Okay.
So that may not end up on the definitive. Let's just.
Alright, yeah, I mean, that was the first, the first thing that I thought was, let's just get that off there.
Yeah, I mean, kind of agree with you there.
Um. Bill, two two other things on the layout of the road that I'm just noticing now as I'm looking at the the plan. Uh, the location of the crosswalk. If you could just move that to the west towards King Street. So that the, um, the residents of Lot Eight, if they were gonna cross the road. They would just walk through the crosswalk. I mean, I I doubt they would take a right, walk the wrong direction to cross the road. So you can just put it a little closer to their driveway there.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
And then. Yeah, I mean, just just a hundred feet to the to the west, that would work. And then, uh, and that that would be on a straighter portion of road too, so it would be more visible. Um, and then. The hard right turn, uh, into the cul-de-sac, is there any, did you give any thought to kind of softening that curve?
Um, I can take a look at that. I obviously wanted to avoid the, uh, avoid the little, uh, area wetland. It's on the left-hand side there, so we were trying to get it away from that. The right-hand side, the left-hand side of the other back property, so. That's kind of why we turned it more at that point. But I can take a look at it, see if we can soften it, you know, how that affects anything.
Alright, and that that's all I had for comments.
Thank you, Pete.
Do we have any residents on this for the, under here?
Wally, let me, uh, run the meeting, please. I was just gonna ask if we have any residents here that want to speak.
Mister Chair, I did receive one correspondence from a neighbor in regards to, uh, the elm trees that are along, um. King Street and whether or not there was any way that we could, um, have them preserve those trees. Uh, I also had, um, shared that correspondence with the developer and his team to let them know that there was some interest in trying to see if there was anything that they could do in terms of the design. It wasn't anything that they, you know, mandating part of the residence, but just that they asked that if they couldn't, um, keep those trees, integrity of those trees that they do. I don't know if the developer had a chance to look at that correspondence and would like to speak to that at this time or at a later date. I also believe the resident is on the call if, um. She herself would like to speak more in regards to that.
Alright.
I actually, I spoke to her. Um, and I explained to her, I had spoken to that woman. She called me after she spoke to Rebecca, and I explained to her that the road going in. We weren't gonna be able to to salvage those trees, but I did explain to her that we, um. Are obligated to plant trees before we're done, all the way down both sides of the road. So she was happy with that, the fact that we weren't gonna plant more trees. And I just listened to what she had to say.
Okay, so you 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 did talk to her, and she was okay with that, so that's that's good. Um, yeah, any other?
Yeah, this is Paul Kench in Abutter, one eighteen King Street. Uh, I want it, my my son Dan is with me. Uh, he's, I asked him to take a look at everything that's been presented, uh, and he's got some questions. Which I've read, uh, so I'll let him, if you wouldn't mind, uh, ask the questions. Dan, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I'd like to go back to the beginning of this process when we received notification from the town. Uh, that materials were in the town clerk's office for distribution. Uh, you know, with the information and application materials. Upon visiting the town clerk's office, uh, it seemed that she tried to restrict the availability of the information by not providing copies. By then providing an incomplete application, and I would like the board to address that.
Is it true?
I, right now, we can't address that because we have no, uh, information on that. So, I mean, with this COVID stuff going on.
It was all prior to any, uh, you know, lockdown, yeah, whatever you want to excuse.
Yep.
So what was, what?
It's not an excuse.
There's two ways to address that. One, one, when we open up the hearings, we get the chair sheets from the newspapers. And the advertising gets read into the docket. And with the abutters list and the green cards. Was that ever presented, Rebecca?
Yes, we did get that information, and if I may add, um, while I can't speak for the town clerk's office, I can speak for the planning department, and I have had. All of the information readily available for every single public member who has given me a call, entered my office, and I've also included all of the materials online. And I have been very, very forthright with anybody who has contacted the office on all of the materials that we have received. So while the town clerk's office may have not provided those materials for the resident or may have. I can't speak to that, but I can speak to the planning department, definitely providing all materials that have been provided to the board and provided by the applicant to anyone who has inquired.
Good, but the, uh.
Thank you.
The town clerk is the keeper of the records, and if there is an issue with the clerk's office that is now being raised. That that has to be taken care of, and and you can ask the attorney there. If it wasn't presented at a reasonable time and when it was acquired about, there was a challenge to the notice. So I would like to address that.
Well, um. I'd like to find out. Exactly what had been provided to the town clerk from the planning department. Did she have all the information she needed to? Get it to the public. I mean, there's, there's probably some details we need to dig into here about that.
It's actually provided by the applicant, not the, the planning board is just one of the many recipients.
Right, uh, well, that's true, that's true. So, uh, I guess I would like to find out a little more information about that before we respond.
Okay, well, I'll give you a little bit more information right now. Uh, so my mother, uh, approached the town clerk for the information. She was instructed that she was not allowed copies, forced to take photographs. Uh, with her phone, and then, uh, another abutter went down with an attorney. Forced, uh, the copies to be made. At first, they attempted to overcharge the abutter. And then after consultation with possibly Denise Demkowsky, then, uh, receded to the state mandated fee for the entire application. But they were incomplete applications.
So the entire, the entire application, are you saying was incomplete, or is it entire?
There were missing. Pieces of the application that were available in the town clerk's office that were then, uh, received by the planning board. So it was an additional step in the process to get the legally required information.
I'm I'm just not clear on exactly what you're saying, uh, what you received, what you didn't receive.
So we were not allowed.
What part of the application did you not receive?
We did not receive any of it. We had to go through an additional. We did not receive any of it, we had to go through an additional resident in town.
I, I thought you.
My mother went to the.
Excuse me, I thought you just said you received it, but there were parts missing.
Yes, so when my mother went to the town clerk's office, she was forced to take pictures of it and never received a copy, are you clear?
So copies weren't made available in the clerk's office for distribution upon request.
Correct.
What was, what was the date that you went down there and what was the date of the advertisement?
Uh, it was immediately following the a butter's notification and was probably around the time of the public notification through the newspaper.
So.
I can, uh, provide that to the town, uh, you know, within.
Well, it should be in the, um, in the notice, what, somebody should have the paper notice and the dates in there, two dates are in there, should be two dates. Does anybody have that?
No.
No, so the attorney doesn't have it, the applicant?
I have that.
Rebecca has it.
Okay, we, we have it, but no one, no one from the applicant's side does?
Well, it's, it's in the newspaper, so when you look at the notice on the bottom of the newspaper notice.
It says the dates, right, right, that's what I'm getting at, what's, what were the, what were the two dates?
So we have, uh, I'm pulling it up right now and.
Okay.
Um, it was, uh, March four, twenty twenty and March eleventh, twenty twenty, which is in. Fourteen days prior to the public hearing, et cetera.
Right, so, so that needs, so, and then the notice states, per standard procedure, that copies are made available. In the planning office, the town clerk's office available for anyone to get it, so, so we have an issue challenged with the town. With the town clerk's office on, on obtaining materials, and then, which brings us to. A secondary question related, the new set of plans, were those provided with the six copies to all the boards necessary on the. Um, on the filing, also to the clerk's office with the change?
I know they were provided to the planning department, and then I had provided them to, um, the departments, but I did not provide them to the town clerk.
Right, it's the applicant's responsibility on all this stuff, not ours, and we were happy to do it. If they drop off all the copies, I'm sure you've been, we've been doing that for decades, but, but as far as the filing of the modification or a change in the plan. Going from whatever it was, to what we're looking at today, two weeks ago, was that timestamped? And presented to the clerk's office?
No, it was not, but I don't believe that Master General Law requires that any revisions and or updates to the plan have to go through the, the town clerk's office. Statutory timeframe is set when the application is filed, any of the, you know, continuances and, um, requests for the relief of those statutory timeframes. Must be submitted to the clerk, but any plan revisions, I'm not certain, I can't, I mean, I'm not gonna say a hundred percent.
It's, it's very, it's very standard protocol, I, I agree with you on the, on the, you know, revisions and blah, 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 blah. But if we have a major revision like this that occurred, a copy has always gone to the clerk's office for times, they just test stamp it anyway. You'll give them a piece of paper, they'll stamp it no matter what, it's not a time restraint on the submission, but it is a submission to make it available. Um, to those that wish to seek it, and if, and we have a bona fide challenge right now. Legit, and we can solve the problem, but what's the, what's the ninety-day clock running on this? When are we up on that?
We are.
Do we have, uh?
No ninety days, there, it's a preliminary filing, the preliminary filing for Master General Law is forty-five days, we are well over the forty-five days. The applicant had granted us a continuance until August, they granted us continuances by meeting, but yet they have assigned continuance until August thirtieth.
All right, good, so we have the timeline to resolve the issue. On the challenge, so, um, so the applicant and its attorney, since we have one on the ro- on the record. Can easily resolve this issue with, with the challenge to the clerk's office and make sure that everything's there before the deadline, correct?
We'd be happy to make sure everything is there.
So that'll take care of that, and that will solve that issue that was brought up by one of the residents that was there, how many residents are actually on this call? Can anybody see? A butters that were noticed? Just one?
Whether or not there's multiple of butters, but I can recognize two of them as being directed butters, one of them in the area and the other two I don't, uh, recognize.
Okay, uh, that was just a, just a question, thank you, okay, and sorry for the interruption, could you continue with your, with your comments, sir?
Uh, yes, please, thank you, uh, so another question I have is with the housing needs of the town. Uh, according to the current housing production plan, the town most needs homes in the range of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It seems that development is planning homes with the garages, uh, and, uh, they're advertising just the homes for sale. For six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I would like to ask how that, uh, corresponds with seeking any waiver. As far as leniency from the town.
The, um, the subdivision over four lots has to do a calculation into the affordable housing. I don't know how this applicant wishes to address that, they can either have a house that's built within that. Whatever that average is that comes out from Merrimack Valley. Um, or typically what we've seen is a portion of funds go into the Groveland.
They're only going with six lots.
Affordable housing, that's typically what they do. I don't know what, they, they could do either, I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Require you to, um, provide an affordable housing unit if you exceed nine lots.
Nine lots, yeah.
Already at nine lots, they don't have to provide the unit, it's recommended that they provide a unit, but if they choose not to provide a unit. They can choose to make a cash payment to the local housing fund based upon section ten point one point eight of the zoning by law.
Right.
Uh, because that tenth house is integral to the whole development and the roadway will be changed, uh, w- would it not be considered in this regard?
No, that's an A and R lot.
It's an existing.
Is that, is that the existing house?
It was a house there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's staying there, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're gonna rebuild, they're gonna tear it down and rebuild a new one.
Yeah, but it's still an existing house.
Right.
Exactly.
It's a four man.
No, as long as we meet zoning, we can replace it anywhere in the lot.
Yeah, no, I was just asking, it was on the same.
Okay, so my question is regard to the whole development as, uh, you know, as a whole view here from the planning board's perspective. There are gonna be ten homes in that lot, the, the driveway that's existing is not gonna exist, and the house is gonna get access. Off the subdivision road and not King Street, correct?
It's the way it typically goes when it happens to, uh, this two or three of those in town right now, actually, one of them was supposed to be Sunset.
It's an access other than legal frontage.
Okay, thank you for that answer, uh, and then as far as the road, roadway length, uh, we feel it to be limited. To the established ordinance, and, uh, to reinforce this point, I tried to forward some excerpts that I submitted to the conservation committee. Uh, from the housing and production plan for the current years, uh, from the town of Groveland, and it reinforces how this area is, uh. Contributing to the town well number one, that is then you turned around and repurposed for revenue inside the town. And I also submitted some excerpts from, uh, current court cases that. Uh, involve Vincent Fiori and, uh, Mr. Lawless, and also Michael Essie as doing the work. Uh, and it's also found a little bit in the, uh, Groveland Conservation Committee's peer review. Uh, it's labeled as significant alterations to the abutting property, uh, over the last twenty years. Uh, easily distinguishable on aerial photos, and so these same people that have used, uh, time and. You know, sand to reduce the amount of water, um, we were wondering if that would be considered. In your application or, uh, review of any waivers that the developers would be asking for.
Do you have any of these, these things in, that you can address? Like you're doing in, in a letter form with the attachments to the board, so that we can have our peer engineer review. Your comments intelligently to get some, some answers with that, cause any, anything that's submitted here is all public record. And, um, and clearly we, that's the typical thing that we do is we'll have our engineer review it. Um, and what you're submitting and see if it has relevance on the subdivision.
In regards to the wetlands though, the wetlands are not under jurisdiction of the planning board, and any filling of a wetland would fall under the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. Can't speak to Peter Ellison in this regard, but I don't feel as O T E C might be comfortable reviewing wetlands at this point in time, specifically since their. Specialize and wetlands, but I mean, we can certainly review any other information, but wetlands I believe should go underneath the conservation commission, but that is just.
I agree, I agree with the wetlands, but the, the question can be asked in that response is probably what I expect, uh, from Pete would be.
Can we stay on point here?
Yeah, that, that is, that's, that's the review, and then it goes over to the, however Pete addresses that, that, that's conservation's bag.
Okay.
The other side.
We stay on point here?
Okay, back on point, so the length of the road exceeds into these buffer zones because it ends up being the eight hundred and eighty feet long, which is. You know, the regulation seven hundred and fifty feet, it exceeds it, uh, and that's, you know, not to the middle of the circle to make it a smaller number, that's to the outside of the circle. So if you bring back the outside of the circle to seven hundred and fifty feet, then you're outside of all the applicable buffer zones, which would impact. The town's bank account, because I believe they use town well number one to sell water to the residents of Groveland and maybe some others. Uh, so what we would like to ask is exactly, um, what. Conditions can be considered for that waiver on the road that they just, it seems like they're assuming they're gonna get. But when the, I think that the, the planning board does have oversight. As far as the management of the town resources with the amount of money that you guys spent with the, uh, land over by well one.
I, I don't think, what, the, the water sewer controls that along the conservation, the road length is clearly. An issue that the planning board will be addressing in this, because i- it's there for a reason and that's a hard number, that's not a number to, uh. Scooch by, and the only time that we've ever waived that number was when there was an, another way out of the subdivision. And that was actually on Stonebridge, they had to build an emergency access road through, and that's the only one we, we've ever done. Um, and it was put there, that road link was after study, after, i- including my own subdivision, which is like the Rocky series, as Bill knows. And, and we got quite a bit of roadway with no way out, a tree falls down across the road in a big storm, there's no way to get people in or out. And the only access out of here was power lines, which is questionable if that could ever happen. But that, that's the reason why the seven fifty was put in, and, and a subdivision should not be designed from the get-go. To skirt the regulation for max density to get more money, um, and that's clearly my position on that, and I wrote that by law. So I'm standing to it, uh, other waivers will speak for themselves.
Stand to it, but Wally, they do an embedment for the town and everything.
It doesn't matter.
We'll have to have a discussion in that, and, um.
I gotta. We'll have the discussion, but.
Yeah.
But Bob, you gotta understand why that was in there.
Wally, but, you know, we can have a discussion on it, and.
Amen.
Popping on it right now, and.
I, I'd like to see, you know what, I'd like to see the, you know, the gentleman that's speaking, I'd like to see it in a letter form so we can digest it.
Yes.
With T E C, I mean, we're not gonna make any rash decisions tonight.
Exactly.
So I'd like to, I'd like to address this in a letter form.
Agreed.
With any supporting documentation.
Yeah, I agree on that as well.
Okay, so I'm no longer allowed to ask any questions?
No, you can ask the questions, but what we're saying is when you're done, we need all this.
We need it in writing.
Record, yeah.
Okay, so also I have, uh, the same, uh, pretty much standard you're asking for that I submitted to the conservation committee. Would you like me to also include some of those materials?
Everything had nothing to do with conservation, so.
Yeah, but some of the information may be, may be helpful, it's a public record, anything you submit is public record, this meeting is public record. If it applies to planning, it applies to planning, but the background information always helps.
Okay, so my next question is for the, uh, app, uh, the, the builder here. Uh, last meeting, there was mention about how this property is in the, uh, Aquifer Protection District two. And then they were seeking waivers on the export ban based on a fifteen percent, uh, area under coverage. And none of their plans seem to reveal any dimensions of hard surfaces and houses and things like that. And it would seem like a lot of the lots are, uh, breaching that fifteen percent threshold to be held accountable for the export ban, including. Uh, I guess you call it the current A and A, the rebuild, uh, if you could address those, uh. See, you know, those actions seeking waivers and where you get your numbers and if you'll provide them.
Yep, I can definitely provide those numbers, um, and I can give you a rundown right now. Um, there's eighteen point three acres of total area, we are in, we are in zone three, not in zone two.
Yes, but it's per lot, so it's like a per lot breakdown on the fifteen percent threshold?
No, it's not, it's a total cumulative area, cumulative impervious area on the lot, on the development, so it's eighteen point three acres. We have allowed to use two point seven of those acres as impervious area, we are proposing one point three, which is half of that. And our number comes out to be about seven point two, now that might change a little in the final development, but certainly will not reach the fifteen percent. So we are well under the fifteen percent impervious area, we do not need to file for a special permit under the zone three or Aqua Protection District. Um, and we will be able to prove that, so, um, I'm satisfied that that's not an issue.
Uh, with looking at your plans, um, the nine parcels are gonna be all separate properties, yes?
They'll be separate lots, yes, but you don't separate the lots individually, it's a cumulative site development condition that you, you're dealing with here. It's the total area of the lot, how much of that total area of the lot that you're developing, how much is, how much is impervious area? You divide the two and you get your percentage, it's not that difficult.
Yeah, the, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, you're, you're, you're developing eight acres and then you're gonna split those into nine different, ten different lots. And so.
Actually eleven, including lot thirteen G, which is part of the subdivision, it's just not being developed, that's the, how we're getting the areas to work.
Right, so that thirteen G would be zero percent hard surface, but then the other ten lots.
The total lot development number, it's not individual lots, it's the total lot development, you do not separate them. You treat it as a whole project, not separate individual lots.
Okay.
You could have it all in one lot, if you wanted to put all the, all the one point three acres on one area, you could do that, but we're not doing that, separating.
Uh, so my next question, uh, regards, uh, X X series flags that were found, uh, on the property. And they were in reference to, uh, delineation for other projects, I was, they got mentioned before, I was wondering. If anybody had been able to recover any, uh, information on past projects.
They're off, they're actually beyond the project limits, so we did not review those flags, they're, I don't think they're there anymore. They were shown on previous plans that I had a copy of in my files, but they're not. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't even know if they're public record, because they don't, they're not filed by anyone, I had them in my files, so I showed them. As they go beyond the limits of what we had flagged, we had, if you look, if you look at the plans, our flags go from A one to A hundred, I believe. On that area where those other flags are, and I believe they were flagged for some property over on Senate Street that was developed by Mr. Adam Mapples in the past. Which I did work on as well, um, so those flags are probably close to twenty years old. I may have the only copy of that plan that exists today, um, so it's basically my information, I used it. As a guide to, when we had Mr. Kurt do the flagging, he had. I, I, I actually gave him some information on that, so he would be able to follow that line and see where he agreed or disagreed on, so. Uh, if you look at those lines, if, in that area, they're pretty similar, so not, it's not this, it's not that far off. But yes, they're old flags, I don't, no longer in, no longer in place, I don't think we can even reproduce them, I just had a copy of the plan that I was able to digitize in. And, uh, show the, those who own them beyond the limits of our property, so.
Okay, and then, uh, can you address at all about how the original plan, uh, was on the adjoining property, but it wasn't identified?
Yeah, it's a moot point now, we're not developing onto that property. It's been, we've drawn that, this new application, new, new development plan does not. It's been, we've drawn that, this new application, new, new development plan does not have any lots on adjacent property. Is proposed even, which we'll also probably eliminate as well, of the issue with 61A.
Okay, and then with, so the nine individual lots that won't require, uh, you to build an additional low income. Uh, opportunity for people in town to use?
I think that was addressed, um, I let.
I'm asking it again.
Addressed.
Repetitive.
Yeah.
It's been addressed.
What I'm repeating ourselves, let's, let's move on with this. Um, we've been on it for almost. An hour and a half now, so. And, and Paul Kint, what, what are you, uh? Are you a surveyor or are you an engineer or something? Will we, how are you coming up with these questions?
Why is it, is, I don't understand. Uh, it's, it's in the public domain, these questions.
I'm just asking, how are you coming up with these questions?
I, I don't think that, that matters to the board where the questions are coming from.
Yeah, it does, but Wally, and you know, and, you know.
In a public hearing, the questions lie. I do, I do agree that they should be submitted to the board in writing so we can properly address them. But it doesn't matter if Joe the bookstore clerk or Sally the engineer submits.
Well, it matters to you when you, you ask a question about some, somebody in the.
You know, it doesn't really matter where I get these questions from. Who are you identifying? Uh, who are you that's trying to ask these questions in the darkness there?
Who am I?
Yeah.
I'm the chairman.
Okay, the chairman.
Yes.
What's your name?
Huh?
What's your name again?
About my name, right on the, on the screen there. Robert Danforth.
Okay, so I, uh, grasped these questions from my mother's experience going to the town clerk and then receiving the photographs from her. Uh, and wondering why she wasn't provided copies. Uh, and then I also reviewed the town's own, uh, literature. Uh, as can be found in the housing production plan, in case you want to review that. And then, uh, I mean, I've just been listening to the developers speak and. Um, you know, I still haven't received any, uh, confirmation from them that they filed with Mass DEP as well as. Uh, you know, some actions there.
So we have an educated resident and constituent which we work for. Bravo. Well done. So if you can get that to the board and anything else and, and anyone listening to this meeting that, that's on tonight and, and I wish it was in person. Same applies. Questions submitted to the board. If they're engineering questions, we will, we will farm them out to a third party engineer. We will get them addressed and they all become part of the public record.
I want.
Public record.
I, we need them in writing.
Yes.
I'm really, really good at doing that, so I'll provide you with all the information you need.
That's fine.
Perfect. Dupendent. That's awesome. That way this, we can get it addressed. Okay. Um, next step on this, so. Another meeting to just get everything addressed and then. Considering we have a challenge to, to address, I'm sure all of this can be addressed by the. By our August meeting deadline, if we have one yet. And, um. And then from there, we can, we can make a vote on that night to go to definitive. Do we have an August meeting, Bob?
Uh, Rebecca, uh, well, we're, we're definitely, nothing in July.
Yeah.
It's up to the board. I know that we have, um, we just received an application, uh, today for 895 Salem Street. So, um, we have 65 days to open the public hearing, so that'll take us until September. So we don't necessarily need to have a, a, a meeting right away, but I do know that there are, um. Uh, at least two individuals who are looking to file Form A, uh, plans and would like them reviewed sooner rather than later. So I don't know whether or not the board has something, uh, either in early August or, uh, late July. But I would recommend at least one meeting in either month.
Yeah, let's, let's do August. Let's do August.
So what's the, so like the last Tuesday in August to get, if everybody's back, that's before school starts typically, if we're going to start school this year. Um, what two, does anybody have a calendar out?
We may be indoors too. We may be able to see plans.
Well, yeah, we might be, we might be working inside, so.
That would help a lot.
Hold on, yeah.
Take 10 times longer on Zoom and it.
So the second week in August would be, uh.
Last week.
It'd be the 11th.
No, the last, the last Tuesday, I, Wednesday, yeah, Tuesday, sorry, last Tuesday in August.
The last Tuesday in August is the 25th.
The 25th.
That would be a good catch-all, meets this deadline here. Um, the A and Rs will just have to be time stamped, uh, mid-August to meet the 21 day. And that carries all those dates.
Or do I have a motion to continue the hearing to the 25th of August?
No motion, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, so I, Wally, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, with you guys. So the meeting is closed and. Next thing on the agenda. To approve the minutes of June 16th, 2020. Do I have a?
No motion.
No motion.
Second.
Okay, I could just do a roll call. Brad?
Aye.
Wally?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay. So, um, there's no, uh, outstanding invoices, so do I have a motion to adjourn at? Eight, well, before I do that, uh, Rebecca, do you have anything you'd like to, or anything?
I'm also, Mr. Cherry had nothing.
You have nothing? Okay, so.
So motion on adjourn.
Okay, at, uh.
Second.
Eight 19. Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, Wally?
Aye.
Jim?
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we'll, we'll see you in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you, residents.